Thank you.
Yeah.
So why it should be here?
Yes, that's fine, really, there is no present, Scott better.
Okay. Call the order the I C the special meeting of the Board of Selection. For August first twenty twenty four at during at six thirty P M. We do have a forum. Selectment Clark is online. So we're called to order, we're gonna discuss Station thirteen, which has had recent developments. Of such, so if you would lead us off. Chief Moore.
Uh, thank you, thank you for calling the meeting. Uh, I'm just gonna give a brief update, so during the building committee process, one of the things that they've been working on is temporary housing. Um, and working to try to reoccupy. Uh, the station at four twenty six River Road. Uh, one of the things that we needed to do, um, before that happened was an air quality test. There was still progressively. Over the last couple of months progressively getting a stronger smell in there again.
Something went wrong, please try again.
Something that went wrong, yeah, something went wrong.
That's exactly what happened.
It could have not been more.
So, um, working with Service Master by Mason and I'll introduce Ryan Mason from Service Master by Mason. Um, came out, we did an air quality test. Which unfortunately failed miserably, I think everybody in the room here has a copy of the test. Um, just so that we can. Have open debate, I would hope that the Board of Selectmen is open to anyone that's here, has questions or concerns that. Um, they'd be allowed to. Speak.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The only other thing I have to say is so currently, um, we did have to move the apparatus that's in that building out. Um, so currently two pieces of, uh. Two things are at Public Works, we have a fire, a fire engine up there. And the foam trailers up there and then our second ambulance has been relocated in in Stafford. So we're not operating out of that building at all.
Do you have indoor storage to staff them for that ambulance?
It is indoors. Um, currently, uh. None of our members or staff are allowed to go there, we do have some people that have a high sensitivity to mold. This is what brought it on to begin with. Um, so. Or this was the start of it a year and a half ago. Um, was in complaints of people not feeling well for quite a while. We tracked it down to why, so. Here we are, um, I'll let Ryan, uh, say vote from here.
Well, good evening, everyone, appreciate the opportunity to chat with you about the. Results that we found, Ryan Mason, Service Master by Mason, um. Twenty three years professionally in the restoration world, um, I'm an I N P, so indoor and active indoor environmental professional. Um, gives me the okay, the sample, talk over the labs. Um, and then talk about whether the space is usable and then potential corrections if viable, uh, that's something you can talk chat down the road. So ended up taking seven samples total. Uh, we always take out of those sample groups, we always take a control, so our control is our exterior air, we wanna know what our exterior air quality is. And as a restoration professional, we want to have the building, once remediation happens, we want the air quality to be equal or better than what's going on on the outside. We will always have some spores. Um, coming in and out, it's mother nature's recycling agent, but we don't want them in excess and we. Want to make sure we don't find anomalies, uh, inside a structure that set off red flags, natural health hazards. Um, of that nature, that's, that's really the idea of sampling, so I took. Um, if you go through page, your pamphlet, if you go to page three of fifteen. Everybody's there, so we look at our control. Um, we can obviously gaze down to our total count and if we run our totals. So we look at our exterior control is at five thousand, a total of five thousand seven, uh, seventy three. We jump over to the kitchen area, or what was the kitchen area? Uh, we have a total of thirteen thousand thirteen. Uh, the office area. Sixteen thousand eight sixty seven and then front, you know, where the rig was, uh, front bay three was, uh, fourteen thousand three seventy three. So just by those standards, the air quality fails in the space. But we look for anomalies, molds that are grown in high moisture environments where organics are, um, and that's where. The red flags really pop with the Aspergillus penicillium, so if you look down at your formal identification line, one, two, three down. You will see your, your outdoor count. Um, was eighty total and you can see as you progress down Aspergillus penicillium is what, uh. Through the, the results completely off. He, if you go down, um, what's elevating the outside these days, uh, in this humid weather is, uh, Bastio spores, which are mushroom spores. Um, and those are extremely prevalent, it's nice that we don't have a, a ton inside. Um, but what's indicating off these results, the air sample results is a repetitive. Uh, moisture issue, uh, in conjunction with organic matter, um, again mold is a, uh. It breaks down organics. So as it all, uh, as it breaks down organics, it continues to grow. Off gases gives off my, myotoxins and that's, that's what gives us the fight or flight when you smell. You know, if you go down to Grandma's basement, you got that musty smell, is that fight or flight smell, um, that's like. It's either I like it or I gotta do something about it and that's usually the first trigger, you smell it before you see it. Um, and that's, um, got us into the sampling mode there. Um, my, I printed mine out, I'm sorry, but you can, you can go through the back chart and you're the C elevated levels, you know, obviously. Clasforium shows up a little bit higher in the kitchen area, clasforium again, um, a water, we'll call it a water intrusion type of mold, um, species. Uh, that goes in conjunction with, uh, Aspergillus penicillium. And I also took, if you go to page, uh, seven of fifteen. I took direct samples, so I used, uh, bio, um, piglets. Um, where I was seeing visible growth on the window sills, uh, both in the, uh, the kitchen window sill and the dayroom sill. Um, and picked up again in the dayroom sill heavy Aspergillus penicillium and. Uh, Aspergillus was heavy in the, um, the kitchen window sill. Uh. Also took a swab inside the women's room AC diffuser, so the user such as that, um, and swab that. Rare, which is good, which I think it hadn't been run much, which is probably a good thing in the space for, for the containment that there was. Um, and I believe it had been cleaned, um, previous, so. What the red flags for me, as we discussed how the process of remediation works, um. Remediation was done, past air sampling, and then one year later, we have these elevated levels showing up, which is an indication of. A constant environment of excess moisture. Being in. Uh, just through visual, you can see steel plates, you know, the steel rotting on the backside and you have a, what a thirty five degree angle on the backside of the, of the building. Which is just a natural water chute, uh, down to the slab. Concrete's porous and if that moisture isn't either removed or dissipated out of building, it's gonna absorb into organics. And boom, you got yourself, um, a growth pattern.
So that.
I'm sorry, can you go for that last sentence again?
Sure.
So.
Absorb the, the.
So as.
Free just porous.
Yep, so as, as the water's running down.
Yes.
The slab is basically. It, it, there's saturated. Saturated and as, as that moisture in that slab evaporates.
Got it.
And wet always goes to dry, so capillary expansion is getting pulled into the organics that are better there and still there, so we got framing.
That's the.
Two by four, correct. Yes, sir, and then so that is now your organic base for growth, there's still a lot of pieces in, you know, doors, uh, a lot of, um. Apparatus, excuse me, pieces in the building still, um. Insulation is probably affected at this point, so the building is in pretty, as far as mold goes. Structurally, I can't say, that's not my bag, but as far as microbial growth goes, it's a space that should not be utilized, uh, for service, it shouldn't be taken out of service, in my opinion.
No question, I, um, all the studs are still, most of the studs are still there.
Studs are still there.
Which doesn't help matters, or, or based on what you just said.
So the studs are still there, the insulation in between the two panels are still there, though that we know is wet because it's rotten from the outside going up.
You're talking about the outer walls.
The outer walls, the, uh, if you're looking at the building, the two right and left walls, not the back, the back has been cleaned.
Well, the back is just the exterior siding.
The exterior siding is actually pressed with insulation in between it, but those outside sheets are rusted.
How long? Aspergillus penicillium, that's a predominant.
That's, that's predominantly what was found, if you go to.
Without, without leaving through the, the organism description.
It's, it's a carcinogen.
Awesome.
So it should not be in large volumes, it should not be inhaling.
It's a carcinogen.
Remediation. There, it's going to take a lot of work to get that space. Condition properly, so we're not having this revolving door.
That, yeah, so if that's something break the, let's break the cycle first, so if, if we can get it so it starts to dry.
Yeah.
Then, then remediate. Could we, could we remediate if we get it dry is what I'm, I, I guess.
Remediation did happen.
Yes.
And a year later, we're back to this point.
Right, but we didn't, we didn't get it completely dry here, so.
Correct, so. Go back to earth grade, or eighth grade earth science, for anything to germinate, we need a food source, moisture and a seed, so we have spores. Organic matter and moisture, we eliminate one of those three, the stool isn't viable, we'll still have spores rolling around, right, they can't grow, they can't off gas. So it's just a matter of how do we keep that space dry, how do we keep the water from entering? I mean, basically, it's, it's, the way I'm seeing it, it's sliding off to the back because we have non-permeable in the back, non-permeable in the front, so that moisture is just getting trapped underneath that slab. Um, and you can see from the siding too, just where it's, as the siding touches, touching the ground, so it's, it's just a constant battle of moisture infiltration. Raising, raising it, you know, you gotta. I'm not the engineer here, but we're gonna have to figure out how to raise that, that slab enough. Or figure out what's going underneath that slab, I don't know if there's vapor barrier or how it was constructed originally, but.
Nineteen eighty.
Ron, so Ron's in, Ron's in the room, remember that. Oh, I should have, my, my question should.
Sure, sorry.
Let's assume a discussion say that the, the, the water intrusion. At all sides of that building, um, are, there's a new system and we refixed it, we, whatever we, we do them to make the water. Not, not ever built, right, um, what type of remediation has to occur in that building?
So the whole structure would need to be remediated, we follow the I S C R C guidelines and I, I can forward that information, so it has the shells, shell not, canned goods, all that kind of stuff.
Pulling the inner metal skins out to get into the insulation, taking all the insulation out of the ceiling?
Yes, sir.
You're. Okay.
You're bringing it back to what true should have, and then figuring out how to. Put it back together. Isn't that roof? Isn't the insulation, the roof, the roof's run sandwiched between the purlins and the, that is the, I think.
Yes. A question on these standards is, so you're using the outside air. The ex, the outdoors as the air quality standard of what should be inside a garage.
At that, at that, so air sampling is a moment in time, so five minutes snippet, uh, what, what we're looking at, so we look at. What's going on in the exterior compared to the interior, so that's what we're, we, we always want our air quality to be equal or better than what's going on. Um, inside a property, New York City guidelines states a thousand parts per million, um, inside a commercial building is the limit. When it comes to what, let's say that again, so New York City. Has, has their guidelines as well, and that's where. The I I C R C guidelines, the S five twenty guidelines, um, have mimicked the, the New York City guidelines. In that commercial structures, residential has no. Has no standards, unfortunately, it goes by the individual, but a commercial building, anything over a thousand parts per million in the air, in a confined commercial space. Would be considered.
So we have to bring up the air qual, if I understand it correctly, is that what we're confused?
Sure.
We have to bring up the air quality of the interior of a garage to the open air outside that's completely ventilated to the world?
That, that is the goal.
That seems like a high standard.
It is, it is a high standard.
And that's the standard to use for garages, housing trucks?
For in, for commercial buildings, building, commercial structures, living quarters. Anywhere where there's public access, it's a thousand E P M, if you're a individual business, you can, whatever you want. It doesn't, you can set your own standard, hospitals have their own standards with their health and safety. Um, so. As far as a residential, it really depends on the individual, because I could be allergic to types A, B and C.
What is B P M again? Parts, parts per million? And that's the standards that you're showing on the totals on page three that we were just saying.
So those, those weren't my, those aren't the standards, that was what was collected.
Right, but you're measuring it to that.
Yes.
That one thousand.
Yeah.
And then exterior air.
Correct, and then you all, so once you look at the total count, you look at the anomalies that show up. And the anomalies that have shown up in high town is your Aspergillus penicillium. Species and that is an indication of moir- moisture intrusion, so clasforium, stachyboxcys, Aspergillus penicillium are the. Three that show up highly, uh, when you're in a damp, you know, bar. That, uh, a high moisture count space.
And how is the standard impacted with? A building like this where you have large overhead doors and it's a constant exchange of air?
That, that's the, you're always trying to control and I totally get it, when the doors open, you, you lose control, but you need to set up an environment where it can recapture. If you can have a separate, you know, if you have your living quarters. That are tied off from the rest, which, correct, we have the dayroom, so.
Yep.
If those spaces are disconnected. You're gonna have a system that's controlling your. Where your crews stay and then.
Well, no one's staying in there now, so I'm just talking about a garage.
Yep.
And if all four were, all four bay doors are open. With a complete exchange of air to the outside.
Yep.
Why can't this facility house trucks?
Because we still have, uh, materials in there that are releasing spores.
And that, and it's, and it's.
And it's already doors, directed trucks from the weather and people still have to walk in there to get a fire truck.
Yeah, and into the fire truck that's been sitting in there.
And then just, just to be clear, the outside air is the standard you're using for whatever we measure inside?
As time of sampling, yes.
So, I have a question, just to understand the counts, the way the counts are defined in here looks like. Per M, what is that, and what's the M?
Yep, so parts per million, root cubic. For parts per cubic meter. Is what we're talking about.
Okay, so that's not P P M.
P P M, no, that is not, but that's.
That's.
Waits to, so this is a five minute snippet, so when we look at. The whole day. We're talking major exposure. Uh, when it comes to it, so three, three cubic meters. So, I'll explain this sampling, so I take a five minutes snippet of time, I have an aerosol pump. Lights over, should have brought this again in, but kinda like the. When you're looking in the microscope, it's got a little government system on it, so I pull fifteen milliliter of air every minute, hold it in the set and that starts getting our, our raw count and then our total spread out.
And so I'm just trying to convert, because of the standards you were talking about were parts per million, I'm just trying to understand how we convert the parts per million to this, uh, per cubic meter.
Yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm, I'll have to give you the calculations.
Okay, you know. Just because if the thousand parts per million is one of our triggers of concern.
Yep.
Then we, we would want us, I would think we'd wanna see that number.
Yes.
Related to this, so that we could say, wow, it's crazy over.
Understood, okay, so I, I can work on.
That, I think that would be good, just so that we're talking, so that the standard matches the measurement.
Understood, yep.
So. Uh, I'm waiting, just give me a minute, I think, is there anybody in line that has anything to say first? Show hands. All right, I'm not, I'm not seeing anything, so essentially. We can remediate if we can break the cycle first. If we could remediate without breaking the cycle, it just would bring us back to this point, right? Relatively soon. Was it a year since the last remediation?
Yeah, it's over here.
Time moves pretty quick, doesn't it? Um. So it seems to me that we need to break the, the cycle and, and one of the, I think the easiest cycle would be to stop getting water in there. Right, mold's a little hard to catch and. I, I suppose we can take out everything. Organic in, in the building, but that doesn't seem to be a good choice, so Troy, we. Uh, the reason I made you come here tonight, because we did look at, at, at one pipe and they're coming, Wednesday, we're gonna try to dig up something and see what's.
Yeah, we're, yeah, so we had the town plumber come down and they jetted the line, they went a hundred and twenty six feet. And then it stops, they couldn't go any farther, so whether it's a wall or where they could go, they couldn't go any farther. So we marked it off for a hundred and twenty six feet is, so we'll dig roughly in that area to see if we can find the pipe. And then if we can, we can either explode, cut into that pipe, re-camera and going down or expose it or shoot an elevation to see if there can be other drains put around there or whatever. That's helped to, the word to decide.
One of, one of our problems, as I see it. Is that. The reality doesn't meet the drawings. At all.
From, from nineteen eighty.
That twenty four inch R C B. Is actually pretty damn close to what's shown on the nineteen eighty.
Yes, well, it's, I, 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 yeah, that, that doesn't surprise me, it's the rest of it from there.
That, the building are about the only things that match that.
Yeah.
So I think we dig it up and take a look and we'll have a better idea, Pete.
Pete, uh, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Pete, but I, I believe from our own emergency services, building committee meetings. Our town engineer has plans that he's completed for the, the intended drainage for that site. Right, and that it wouldn't be whatever, as Troy says, it would be the engineer saying, we want this drainage reconnected to this pipe. To, to remove the water, dry out the building and then have the.
So, these are new, new drawings from when? Are these the drawings from nineteen eighty?
I'm not sure, but Andy seemed to think that those were in hand, it might be some updating, but.
See, that's, that's, I think that's the issue is the updating.
Well, he's never done it, John, so we had asked him.
Well.
We had asked. Because no one asked him.
I did.
We have asked him.
Well, we don't have it, we don't have any.
We don't have, see, not what Andy said.
He said.
Well, Pete, we don't have one.
Pete, we gave him the elevations, the property, because we have the A two zero, we have all the elevations, so we gave him the elevations. So I don't think, we haven't seen anything back on what he did to those elevations.
I'm sorry Andy's not here, because I, I think there's progress occurring on this front, we have.
I have no idea, I'm not, Pete, I'm not, I'm not saying there isn't progress. I'm just saying that from what my understanding is that the drawings. May or may not be different than what is actually in the soil. This, is that a fair assessment?
Uh. As built, I don't think there was an accurate as built over dump.
There we go. That, that's, that's essentially what I'm saying. So I, I think, and, and. We can't get in there with a camera, we try. So now we're gonna have to dig a hole and, and take a look.
And I have high confidence our town engineer can manage to design drainage to surround the garage.
I, I think our, our public works director can design that, water going down the hill.
You can put, what, exactly, water goes downhill.
That's very reassuring, very reassuring to hear.
Exactly, even if you don't use that pipe, there's plenty of pitch around that building, you can run a new pipe and dump it out onto thirty two where the scene is, you, you agree, Ron?
Yeah, um, I, I think it would be ideal.
Ideal, exactly, but i- if it couldn't happen, it, there's plenty of pitch to put a new pipe in and run.
We'll be crunching on state prop.
Which our representatives are working on as we speak, Ron.
I understand, but.
I.
I think it's reasonable to expect that the concrete pipe is probably still valid, valuable, usable back to the catch basin.
Exactly.
The catch basin's gotta be under that parking lot, no one would have done the work to get rid of that, even if they buried it, they wouldn't have gotten rid of it. So the catch basin's still there, so really you've crossed the town road. And then you gotta find a way to reconnect the building to the catch basin.
Or dump it into exactly.
But keep in mind, between that storm drain will be thinking and the buildings will probably need to be dug by hand. You have a leach field, have a pre-strat tank, you have a cement tank, the two different lines coming out. Uh, under, two underground propane lines, a water line and the underground electrical telephone, we're all right there.
Hey.
You can't.
The building, we can dig up.
You can't just take a backhoe, just go crawl across the yard there, there's, everything's there.
I have a question for, for you, the, in based on your professional experience, the. Readings that you're getting inside that building and what you know about it after being in there and doing your. Your analysis. Is, is the mold problem in there something that's been there for years? Is it, is it overnight, is it?
So you can get mold from it in twenty four hours if conditions are right. I think this is with the rot and deterioration that's happening along the studs, it doesn't rot in. Year, you know, it weeks, since we're talking years, so we've had that give and take of water hidden in those cavities for a long duration of time.
So my understanding, well, spores is correct, those spores can, can dry out. And reside. On, on material or in the material. And until the conditions are right, they're inert.
Absolutely.
But, once the conditions are right, they can blossom.
Right, okay.
So I'm making sure that's understood. Given, given the amount of moisture we had this. Past since December. And, and the high humidity, et cetera, et cetera, is it, would this be a bad year or a good year?
Bad year, all right.
So that's, it, it, that's exacerbating what, what's already a problem.
Right.
So. We, we briefly touched on, and, and. Uh, I guess, uh, speaking from somewhat of a, of a more of a selfish. Perspective. A lot of us have worked in that building for a lot of years, I worked in there for twenty five years, a lot of hours every single week and you threw out a word. That scares the hell out of you, which is, this stuff is cancerous. I hope everybody that's dealing with this project understands that you're dealing with people that do this for a living, they're in that building because. They have to be in there. And they've been in this environment for who knows how long.
And mold deals, again, it's so individual on how it affects people, so, you know. One person, their immune system is great, others. Get hit harder than others, anybody who's immune compromised, they're gonna get hit harder than others potentially, and again, it's about species, levels and what your personal body can address on its own. I guess we'll find out.
Well, right, so question again, uh, for Mr. Mason, the, um. I'm sure you knew you're gonna get this question and I'm sure you can't give an exact answer. Um, if the mold intrusion issue, although, I'm sorry, the moisture intrusion issue can be resolved satisfactorily. Which is a big question mark, any kind of ballpark on the cost to get the building back clean?
What, what's the total square footage of that structure anyways?
Which was.
Uh, or.
Forty eight hundred?
Something forty eight hundred something, yeah.
Somewhere in that ballpark?
Around five thousand.
The ceiling and of course the whole roof has that insulation and the two side walls are, what about two thirds insulated on each side?
Uh, they go all the way through the off, or all the way to the office window.
So about two thirds on each side.
Um, and I just, what he's thinking of that, just remember, everything that. Powers that building or runs off of those buildings is in, is connected to those walls.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 and I don't even, I don't even expect that he would know all the construction costs, but Joe, you've got experience in this business, you're gonna get, if, if you get the contract to clean it.
Yeah, but there's. Is there a ballpark? For the remediation, getting the building safe and ready for reconstruction, you could probably estimate between eleven and fourteen bucks a square foot. I, lifts, you know, some miscellaneous stuff that. You know, again. We had the opportunity to bid on the first go around, um, but that. Uh, it's just a matter of now what we gotta deal with, you know, again, you're taking.
So there would be a demolition cost and then there would be somewhere between maybe fifty and a hundred thousand dollars. So there would be a demolition cost and then there would be somewhere between maybe fifty and a hundred thousand dollars worth of cleaning remediation cost.
So, yes, you're you're at five thousand square feet, you're probably looking at. Yeah.
Maybe fifty to seventy thousand dollars worth of remediation cost, right? The the demo cost that I already said, and that gets you back to.
To ready.
To ready to start reconstruction and of course proper air handling to keep place dry.
Yes, yeah.
Just trying to get a rough grasp of what we're talking, we're talking about hundreds of thousands.
Well, based on what you said, it's like, is it, is it financially idiotic? Yeah, I don't know.
Hang on just a minute, Stephanie?
Uh, yeah, hi Pete, Steph Summers, Y Road, um, I just wanted to ask, uh, the gentleman there, uh, Mr. Mason, is it? In in your, in your view. Um, if this were all done and say we're on the other side of a remediation and and re. You know, at the point of deciding what to bu- what to put there. Um, is it, uh, is it a situation that's easily repeatable? Given that slope and everything we've been talking about for months and months here in town?
Again, if. Yeah, if. If we keep the space below fifty percent relative humidity, the opportunity for mold growth is pretty much eliminated. If hot water heater goes out or there's an anomaly that goes on. Roof blows off, whatever, and water isn't intruded, there's a chance of regrowth. But again, if those, if the. Issues that were, that are at hand, that drainage problem and infiltration around the backside of the building is is eliminated and that slab is kept. As dry as a slab on on earth can be, then the chance of growth is, should be. And we're conscious of the reconstruction point too. Keeping the sheet rock, you know, a couple inches above, you know, not sitting on top of a slab. So we're, and we have enough air handle with air changes and we keep that space as dry, you know, again, we open the doors. What whatever mother nature's given us is pushing in, as soon as those doors close, we gotta have the capacity to pe- patch back up. And have a busy stations, if that's the case, we we just need to be conscious of C F M, air changes, filtration, all that, all that good stuff. And definitely in the, in the crew areas where everybody's, you know, relaxing before a call. Um, that that space stay clean, we reduce organic load, all that, keep, you know, keeping it clean is a big thing too. On top of, uh, moisture control, so.
Relative, relative humidity is is our magic number that we're looking at?
Anything about, once we start taking over sixty.
And you start getting uncomfortable.
Correct.
Is there a temperature at which the mold spores?
Are happy, oh, in earth, um, so mold will grow in your refrigerator, it it'll grow, you know. So the happy, happy temps are sixty-eight and eighty-six, so split those, those are our happy temperature for mold to grow. But again. The warmer the air, the more moisture is gonna hold, so we need to control that, so conditioning the space is gonna be our best bet. Temperature, I I don't, temperature I could really care less about, it's it's moisture and then, uh, do where we hit the point. Because we could have a cold slab, um, and then. You know, it starts condensing on it on the ground, and that maybe it's not pushing up, maybe it's it's settling on the concrete and and.
New drain revives flames.
So, sounds to me, and I I don't know where to go from here, other than to say we gotta stop the water. So I I got one more thing I need to add, and this was one of the primary, this was the primary reason I had it right, so. The other larger concern is that I don't have a fire truck on the side of town. I have two months, roughly, as long as we don't get a cold snap before then. To be able to put fire. Alright, I don't have a fire truck in this town. I don't have any animals on that side of town. Which the animals usually doesn't run except for at night out of there, or when the first, you know, Saturday's up there. But we're storing equipment in other towns, we're taking over public works' spots. I have a problem. Yeah. I I have a problem and I don't know how to address it, um. Full disclosure, we had a meeting with the state of Connecticut today, um, Jeff Gordon had pushed some. Buttons and was able to get us a meeting set up with, uh, Demus. Uh, the director, deputy commissioner of Demus, um, state fire administrator, um. And we spent about forty-five minutes having this conversation of what to do. Um, unfortunately, they're in the same boat as we are. Um, there is no way that they can provide housing, they've done everything that they can. There's just no way begin by law unless there's a state of emergency file for them to try to get something out of FEMA or anybody else.
And locally, it's steep as.
This locally, i- i- locally, we'd have to go after Steve Grant's or county fund it. It's a legislative session, there there's nothing at the state level that they can do. Um, they're more than willing to help work with us for whatever they can. Funding they can't do, not unless we go after a grant. Um, and finding housing, finding stuff like that, they they've. They've had five congressmen, senators go after them, um, and they can't, there's nothing they can find that'll do it, that fits within the law. Oh, we have, one of us, this guy's in jail. I I have a concern, I I have a giant concern, one.
Right. Oh, no, I understand, you, um.
The south station isn't adequate for our staff to be in.
I think you mentioned at one point a temporary shelter for the truck that could be put in the parking lot.
We did find, uh, it did get pricing, it's about six thousand dollars, just over six thousand dollars a month. So it's about eighty thousand dollars for the year, but I did find out in our meeting, cause the, this afternoon, and I haven't been able to talk to the woman yet. Um, they're on the state's contract bid list, so. There is a potential that that will be lower, um. That is just a temporary building to put the trucks, you cannot live in it.
Right, no, no, I I I I got that, I just want a truck at that end of town because.
It's heated electric doors with an exhaust system, which outfits better than what our station. And and I don't wanna sound doom and gloom and I'm not trying to pressure anybody, but I have two months. And in that two months, I don't have a fire truck there. We're relying on the truck coming out of the centers now, or out of the, down by.
South station.
South station, or one coming out of here. To get to the north end of Village Hill.
Chief, have you altered, you mutuated?
I have, Stafford, I have, okay, so we, so we.
There's a short-term accommodation.
Correct, so Stafford is has been added. If they go.
It's not an ideal situation, I'm trying to see what all the moving pieces are, right?
So we did alter, yes, that was the first thing, making sure that additional trucks are coming from that end, but that is still. Things that keep me awake at night.
Does the building committee, is it next week? So I guess we've got more to talk about next week.
Yes, you do.
He.
And I'm not trying to discredit, and and the building committee has a lot of work to do, um. We've got to figure the trouble sooner than.
Well, that's, that's part of my hope for the building committee is to make sure we we got the existential problems of wells.
I think we made it our number one priority, Pete.
Yeah, that I I would, I would, I would looking, I wouldn't doubt that, would, I, and I'm not saying nobody is, I just. We we have a sense of urgency that we gotta do something.
Well, and you, I think you know, chief, from the meetings, I've been trying to hammer out your sense of urgency.
I absolutely agree.
So I I think what would help, Pete.
Yeah.
Is accelerating. Our ad engineer and public works, stop the water.
We're scheduled for next Wednesday.
Which is great, and I appreciate all, I appreciate all the efforts today, which have been quite a bit, there's been progress occurring here, so I'm a little. Disconcerted by the doom and gloom.
Yeah.
I approached everything here, uh, but the more you can do to this first selectmen to. Facilitate the drainage, which is what this all comes down to.
Yes, I I I got that.
We wholeheartedly appreciate it.
We, uh, that that is one of my chief concerns, and that's why we.
Thank you.
Always working with with Troy to bring in platinum, and the amount of gravel and mud that they took out of that concrete pipe was phenomenal.
Where did it all go?
Into the, into the, uh, ditch on Long Thirty-two.
It will be dug out.
Good question, so, um, I know you mentioned two months is, like, that's the timeline.
That's what we're, just to be on the safe side, because public works need phase back for once, it starts getting cold, they can't leave.
Okay, that's why that's two months.
Okay, that's what I was wondering what we're driving next month. Okay, uh, Stephanie?
Uh, yeah, just, just a question, I I, I'm pretty sure you've got so many people in the room who are, who are in these organizations. But like D E S P P with the state, this is not going through the politicians, but. Uh, D E S P P and 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 volunteer firefighters in Connecticut and New England. Do they have any kind of like, uh, emergency funds or their own sort of go fund me for this very kind of thing?
No, no.
Okay. Just thought I'd ask, I know they have a lot of good grants at at D E S P P, so I just.
Yeah, I I said I was part of the state fire, um, association on the board and there's nothing I've asked.
But they have five friends in mold places, uh.
Go ahead. So just some, some concern, I I, I mean, to be able to dig up. Remediating. And make it where the trucks can go back in, it seems like it's almost not gonna happen. Realistically, right? I mean, the way government move, I'm not saying it shouldn't, right? I'm just saying government moves slow, right? And what's the plan B, uh, going forward if if that doesn't happen?
That's, that's, that's where.
So nobody has.
For B?
Yeah, well, yeah, sure, what is? So if October comes and I, we don't have something, I've gotta find places outside of town that the trucks are gonna settle. Is there, have you been in? We we have, um, Ashford possibly can take the truck. There, the state's trying to see if they can get a bay or two at the D O T garage down here.
Sure.
Again, those are short, they're not all that'll fit the fire truck.
Sure.
Um, but. Uh, we could possibly get an email in there, start a trailer or a trailer or something like that.
Huh?
We do have twenty-four hour access.
It's just ridiculous.
So, then, you're telling me you don't have. Harder than.
No, I I.
I wouldn't do that.
And you're, and you're in the, in the town? So, another question, like, Mason, you said, right? So is there, and and this is if you add the contract, is there a way to be able to isolate where you can just focus on the garages? And still have the RV for people to live off of, so maybe the, just focus there, to speed things up or?
Right now, it's it's an open, open concept building, so it.
I've never been inside. Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, what's your name? Nick. Uh, that that's what, that's what these guys are working on, uh, once, we had a plan, we're working towards a plan for some type of temporary housing. But then it came, and to bring the trucks back in, and let the five persons go in, grab the truck and leave, but then just kind of quash that, so. I think ultimately our goal is to be able to just get the trucks back up there and have some temporary housing there, you get, you know, at least they can get in, you know, win and take and go. Right now, the vehicles can't be in there.
And and what Tyler just said was an interim plan anyway. The final solution for station thirteen, it was just.
Coming up with money just doesn't happen real fast. Nobody wants to give me any.
Okay. So, going forward, let's see what we can do about water. Then we'll, we gotta start thinking about temporary. For your trucks and temporary for your people. And, uh. Hopefully, we can move all this to the. Facilities building committee for. Possible solutions. And and even if we gotta get to do something, Tyler, we can. I wanna get to the point where we can get a truck in there and leave it there at night and have people that can get to the truck. That, I I think that's bare minimum as far as I'm concerned, Mike?
Um, I guess I would, since we're in this particular, um, venue right now and it's a selectmen's meeting, I would say that. Based on the process and how the financial process works in town. If we can get a path forward, which I think we've gotten very close to, if we can finalize a path forward with this new information and get some suggestions. I would like the board of selectmen to help and the board of finance to help with getting special meetings set up. Because of the fact that our committee would have to make a recommendation to the board of selectmen, we'd then have to recommend it to the board of finance, we'd have to send it back to the board of selectmen. Yes. To call a town meeting, so we all know that is weeks and weeks just of process.
Right.
So the faster we can make that process.
We can, if we can make special meetings happen, right, that would.
The buyer still knows what we're doing and we can get the approvals we need, because otherwise just process is gonna take us like cold weather.
That's why to get a second referendum took us a month, is just process. So, speaking for the board of finance, which I can only speak for one-third of us. Um, for a select. For a selectman.
I was, I was calculating that off my head, I'm like.
Sorry. Speaking for the board of selectmen. Or one-third of the board of selectmen, I think we can make special meetings happen, we made this one happen. The board of finance, uh, runs on their. I I see we have two members of the, three members of the board of finance here tonight, so. We we maybe will make that happen as well, but I think we need to to move some things along and. We're in discussions on on where we can find some of that money now, I I think we need to step that up.
And the other part of my request would be, could you reach out to Andy since he is board of selectmen and says meetings, but he's also the chair of the building committee?
Yes.
And ask him to be as ready for next week's meeting as possible on all of this stuff, so that we can.
Right, we've. Andy and I. Have. He he told me when we were discussing, when did that all this meeting, he said that he probably couldn't make it, but then he would definitely be watching. The video, so that he could be caught up for your meeting.
Yeah, he and I are meeting, uh, tomorrow to go over making the presentation.
Great. Awesome, go ahead.
I know you're not an engineer, you kind of are. So I, I have a question, if if you go out, whether it's today or tomorrow or the next day, and you dig where you wanna dig. And you don't find anything that's really your aha moment or favorite moment. I guess, and Robinson in the room too, I don't wanna put him on the spot, but I can't imagine that it's a real heavy lift. To dig around the back of that building down to the side, knowing what Stuart said as far as all the things coming out of the side. And run a pipe out to daylight somewhere to keep the water away from that building.
That that, I, that's what I've said all along, if that's, if that pipe doesn't match the, like, if we can find the elevation. Just to say, there's certain drains around there are ready, so say if they failed and they go into that pipe or go into a base and that's covered up.
Yeah.
If we can uncover that, if there's nothing there and the elevations work or whatnot, you can tie into that drain. That's why I said in the beginning, if it's not, then put a whole new curtain drain.
Dig it up and drop it in.
That's exactly, and then run it right out.
Go to the north, go to the north side.
Yeah, I mean, right.
I don't wanna sound simplistic, but it seems pretty.
A- yes, exactly.
Yeah, we just, we had that discussion, we had that discussion the night we had the special board of selectmen and board of finance meeting. Last year at the fire station, we walked around and talked about that, didn't even do it, but here we are now later.
Okay. From my perspective, as a relatively pragmatic engineer. Uncover the end of the the upstream end of that twenty-four inch R C P. I'll come out, a perimeter laser will shoot grades. And we'll see, if we can't put anything in that building, we can dig a trench across the front of the build.
That, right, exactly.
Absolutely, and go down the north side and go around the back, if we, if that pipe is low enough and we can get the slope. Trenching that is also gonna give us some insight as to how much groundwater is really there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, you know, we see the surface dry, but we don't know what's going on.
The slab is, how the condition of, you know.
But if if we can put a perimeter drained at least around west, north and east side.
Get a narrow bucket, let's call it.
Just let me know, I'll bring one in.
No alligator, no alligator.
Let's, let's, alright, so. I think we've come to a portion where we are not treading water, so. I'm gonna move to adjourn and I'm gonna see if Mr. Clark is, can hear me and will second my motion. Mr. Clark?
I know he's at work, so he.
Yeah.
He said he can vote if he needs to.
Yeah.
Yeah, but he's gotta know he's being called.
Oh, he's listening.
Or is he?
There we go.
Alligators as well, alligators on the boat. Move to adjourn.
There we go, thank you, I'll second it, and, uh, Matt, uh, say aye. There we go.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, and, uh.
And Wednesday, let me know when you figure out to this date, and then, that's when you're saying.